Okay, good morning. We're going to call the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of council to order at nine oh five. We are recording on Zoom. We're having some technical issues. And our live end, we'll see if we can get that remedied, but it will be recorded and available on our regular YouTube channel. So just prior to starting the meeting, just want to acknowledge that councillor De Groot and councillor Hildebrand are joining us via Zoom. And everyone else is in the room. So the meeting called to order, is there any changes to the, go ahead?
I just have one change or one addition to the agenda I would like to add somewhere in, and that's Christmas office hours.
Yes, okay, thank you. We'll add that just under, how about nine point four, under request for just, yeah, request for decision non-bi law. Does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I request a motion.
I'll accept the agenda as presented.
Hey, thank you. Any questions? Those in favor? Okay, that is carried. And we'll go to the minutes, confirmation of minutes, November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of council minutes.
I can move them as with the minutes of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as circulated.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, those in favor?
Favor.
Thank you. That is carried. Okay, four point two, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, special meeting of council minutes.
I can give the motion to accept the minutes of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, special, special meeting of council.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, those in favor? That's carried. So I got so excited about having to sit in this spot that I missed number three, the protocol items. So I will circle back to that. I, I have a couple and I know, and I have another one as well to add. So anyone else before I start on protocol? Items? Yes, three, Harris.
I think we should acknowledge that on Friday, there was a special ceremony at the here in Tabor and numerous members of our town and municipality were awarded the Queen Elizabeth Platinum Jubilee Medal, including Deputy Reeve Meanega. It's an honor.
Thank you. That's fine. All right, that's the last time acknowledging your mic. Thank you very much. It was a real honor to and to see all those names. It was great. We have some excellent people in our municipality. And as we all know, all the things that get done are with the help of everybody else, those awards are just one of those acknowledgements that come along from time to time. So on that, December nineteenth, MD of Tabor Regional Fire is having their candy cane food drive and Christmas parade at six thirty. They will be roaming the streets of Vauxhall, Enchant, Hayes, Grassy Lake, and Barnwell, and collecting food for the Vauxhall and Tabor Food Banks, which serve our municipality. So watch for their light show and try to get out some items. And for those of us who live in the country, try to get to one of those communities so you can see it. And just another one that we usually have highlighted is the Retlaw United Union Church Candlelight Services, December nineteenth, with the service starting at seven. And then my final one, this will be our last meeting before Christmas. So from Deputy Reeve Harris and all of council, we would like to wish all of our residents a Merry Christmas. And we would also like to wish our staff a Merry Christmas and thank you for the service that they provided in two thousand and twenty-two. It's been a busy year and we're grateful for the leadership of our, our C O, Arlis Croft and all of his team. And we'd especially like to acknowledge those who will be called out, whether there's a snowstorm or roads that need to be cleared and to our firefighter volunteers. So we wish you and your families a Merry Christmas and I hope you'll be able to take some time to enjoy a break during the holidays. Okay, with that, anyone else have anything to acknowledge? We will move to the public engagement process. Is there anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to council? Okay, seeing none, we will go to five point two one. Corporal Gemmell is here to give the RCMP report. Thank you for attending.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to present the November two thousand and twenty-two stats for my detachment. In November, we took one hundred and thirty-nine calls for service and one hundred and twenty-five of those were within the M D. We had zero impaired related suspensions last month. There were twenty-four nine-one-one hangups. We did thirty-eight criminal record checks and three fingerprints for the general public. We did seventeen patrols to Enchant. We did thirty-one patrols to Grassy Lake and we did fourteen patrols to Hayes for a total of sixty-two patrols. For the campgrounds, the Forks got one patrol and the Enchant campground got two patrols for a total of three campground patrols. And there were a total of one hundred and forty-six patrols within the M D. Violation tickets were low last month. There was four written by my detachment members within the M D and there was a total of six written within my detachment area. And Red Cliff and Lethbridge Traffic Services wrote two tickets in our area last month. Go down to the Tabor Provincial Crime Gauge. This is from January until the end of November. Person's crimes are up forty-seven percent. Property crime is down nine percent. Other criminal code is down thirty-five percent. Break and enter saw sixty-seven percent increase, which I've covered in previous meetings. And theft of motor vehicles has seen three fewer instances and there's been a thirty-four percent decrease in theft under five thousand with fourteen fewer instances. And that's a snapshot of what's going on at our office. Any questions, concerns?
Anyone have any questions or comments or? Roll ahead, Reeves.
Just going forward in, into the Christmas season, I know it usually you ramp up check stops and that sort of stuff. What's the plan this year? The same?
Yeah, same. So December third, I believe, was our National Impaired Driving, impaired driving day, and we participated in that. And we usually do check stops as it gets closer towards Christmas and on a nap, like on an attachment scale, and also there's initiatives that we are seeing people so on targeted weekends as well. So.
So as part of that, will you be utilizing our community standards officer that's part of the town or that, is that?
Yep, for sure. We can utilize him because they can help with provincial offense offenses. So yes, we will be partnering with them.
All right. Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you and the detachment. Thank you much. I'll take a motion to accept the RCMP report for information.
I can give you that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Clausen. Comments or concerns? Those in favor? Okay, number six, declaration of conflict. Does anyone have anything they need to declare at this time? Seeing none, we will continue on to the consent agenda. So seven point one, we received correspondence from the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services. We brought that up at R M A and it's been, letters and information have been going to the province up to the Ministry of Public Safety and Emergency Services. This is directly related to victim services. It is a good letter. I think people were happy to receive this from what I'm hearing across the province and know that there actually has been a call for an advisory group to look at a few of the issues that have become prevalent. So that's very good. And there's been a call for people to sit on that. I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions on that. Okay, and then the next one is the Town of Tabor Economic Development Long Table Dinner sponsorship. I believe that's yours, Councilor Tercado.
Yes, this was discussed at Joint Economic Development and there's been some correspondence going back and forth with the members from Joint Economic Development. I believe they're looking for sponsorship. I believe that they, I don't know when the town's last meeting was, they were going to present there for looking at getting a donation from the town to proceed with this, the planning of this. I believe they're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars. The first number of years, it will be using consultants to help with this. People that have a better idea of how to, how to pull this off. So they're hoping to sell, I can't remember, I think it's a hundred tickets. There is all that information in the email.
No, it's not.
They're hoping to sell a hundred tickets for a hundred dollars each for the meal itself. That doesn't cover all the costs as there's organizational costs that would have to be helped with.
So, and I did not see in this agenda a request for.
And that might come in a later date. I did email Amy early this morning as she asked me when they might be able to, or something about them presenting to the town for twenty-five hundred dollars and then coming to ask us as well. And so I was maybe hoping to put this on the agenda for the first meeting in January, I believe is tenth, is that right? First council meeting in January, I believe is January tenth. And even if, I guess, if we could just move a spot for them there, that might be best.
Reeve Harris?
I, did we get another, did we get another email? Because there was sponsorship, I thought I'd read somewhere about sponsorship and whatnot, and maybe it was in a different email than what's.
Might have been in a different email. But I don't think the formal request has come yet. But there will be one to come.
Okay, I was gonna, I guess I was thinking that it was, I, I, somewhere I've read another email that was asking for sponsorship, so I was gonna move it to the exemptions, but I guess this one's not asking.
Administration, do you, do you have an updated email? And, and it's okay if it's not on the agenda because we do have people who are well aware. We can move it to the consent if that would be easier.
We have, Mrs. Brian, we haven't seen anything in that regard.
Okay, so are you guys okay? Just to put it, okay.
Yeah, we could, I guess, just to hold a spot in the January tenth meeting. Hopefully, hopefully some correspondence will come through between now and then.
Sounds good. Okay, so that gets us to the end of the consent agenda. I didn't hear anything that needs to come out. So can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I can make a motion. Accept the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. And those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. All right, we are now moving to memos, the upcoming meetings and events. Do you want to run us through that, Brian or Lace, or does anyone have any questions on what's presented?
There isn't a ton on here. The M D Staff Christmas Party is this Friday at the, at the Heritage Inn, starting at five thirty, dinner is at six. The Fall A S B Town Hall is virtual this year. It's also on December sixteenth. If any of council is wanting to attend that, let me know and I can get you the link. January thirteenth, this was on last agenda as well, the foothold, Foothills Little Bow Municipal Association Meeting at the Coast Hotel in Lethbridge. Registration is at nine thirty. And Grand Prairie A S B Conference, Provincial A S B Conference in Grand Prairie, and I believe Murray, John De Groot, and Brian Hildebrandt, I have registered for that. Other than that, I know I see that Deputy Meanega has included the land use bylaw workshop. Administration is proposing either February sixth or March sixth, and that will be confirmed in, at the January meeting.
Okay, I just threw that on there so people knew, book a spot on their calendar before they head off to their next event. Any questions? So if there was something to go to Foothills Little Bow, we've talked about it a couple times now. I don't think we have anything. But we would be having to call a special meeting if we were, but I think at this time we've had some on there every time for the last few, so. Okay. I'll call for a motion to accept the upcoming meetings and events as presented.
I can give you that, accept the upcoming meetings and events.
Thank you. Those in favor? It's carried. Okay, and the Horsefly Spillway Fund, yep. Horsefly Spillway Funding Update eight point two.
Um, we've got a memo on the agenda for the Horsefly Spillway Emergency Funding Shortfall. I'd asked Jack Dunsmore, the project manager for that project, to come in and speak a little bit about where the project's at, as well as the, the, the current funding that we have for it.
Great. Good morning, Jack. Thanks for joining us.
Okay, I guess I can give you a little bit of an update on the project as we speak today. They've got two of the structures that have to be replaced are one's out now, it's tore out yesterday. They will start doing prep work, forming, pouring concrete later here this week. The one new structure they're putting in is all ready to go. They're pouring concrete this morning, actually, starting that, that process, and that would be done. They'll both be done. They're, they're planning on having both those structures done before Christmas. So they'll be heating and hoarding, of course, with the cold weather. They've got a lot of permanent fencing up already, or temporary fencing, sorry. Between Christmas, New Year's, there's about a six hundred meters of pipeline, T I D or S M R I D pipeline that we have to move. That's kind of in the way that for the project itself, they'll be doing that. Scheduling that between Christmas and New Year's, they'll be doing that. They have a subcontractor coming in. All the landowners have been very, very good to work with and so far the contractors working hard.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Jack?
My, excuse me, my question is more, I don't know, probably around the table and, and Jack also, but I mean, we've identified that we're about four, almost five million dollars short on phase one. I don't know when we go to the government. I don't know if we put a number to it yet because phase two and three hasn't been put out to tender. So I'm, I'm wondering what you guys think the best approach is when we, I mean, we've brought it up with numerous ministers and M L As last month when we're in Edmonton, but I hate to put a number on it and get pinned to they're only asking for five million because it might be more than that when phase two and three actually gets put out. So I, I'm just curious from your side. I, I know we're short, but do we peg a number to it already? That we need this much more? Do we, we need this much now and we're gonna need some more later?
I, I think it's pretty hard to peg a number to it right now. Phases two and three are in the very preliminary engineering portion of it. And there's, phase three is the one that comes from the S M R I D canal to Horsefly. And we're, we're doing a few things on that one to tweak that a little bit to help us with some of the costing. We've got the original costing, I believe phases two and three was about twenty-five million. But that's back from the original estimate. And since that, we've known that, of course, inflation, we know with this project, this was also estimated at about twenty-two million with engineering, phase, phase one. I talked to the engineers yesterday and asked them when they would be willing to throw another closer estimate for phases two and three, and they're not prepared to do that yet. They said we're just too far away. If that helps you or not, Merrill, I'm not sure.
Well, like I said, I know we've thrown that five million dollar number around to numerous ministers in our M L A. And if it ends up being twice that much, then we gotta go back again. And I mean, like I said, I, I'm okay with the five million dollar number, but it's just going back numerous times. Well, we're short again, we're short again.
Yeah, well, Brian, Brian and I had a good discussion about that yesterday and I guess from our, from our point of view is the more you ask, the less you're gonna get. So that, I would ask for more than what you think you need. If that makes any sense to you or not, but.
We'll go back to that, but councillor Hildebrandt?
Yes, and as, as was mentioned here already, we've been talking with the M L As and ministers. It's been something that councillors have been doing every time they have an opportunity, probably the last opportunity. I had and councillor Torquato had was at the highway three twenty announcement and we're able to mention it to the premier at that announcement as well as to the transportation minister. And then another line of commentary that we had at R M A was in this environment where prices are escalating. A four-year-old estimate is not very useful. So that might be part of the approach that we need to take with the province that these funnel funding models need to have some kind of a inflation escalator in them, and that's, that could be part of our lobbying effort as well, perhaps.
Thank you, Brian.
What I want to point out is i- in the memo with regards to the, the approximately five millionish funding shortfall that just came up with the tendering of the project where the the actual tender amount was approximately five million more than what was budgeted for. There's also an additional amount and I'll just, I believe I can bring it over and share on the screen. If everyone can see, see this, the, the number right here, just under six million dollars, is the unfunded portion as well. That is, is budget to be shared amongst the committee members municipalities. The bottom four on the list, I believe are, are, don't wanna, don't wanna contribute. So I guess in addition to the, the, this five million shortfall that just came up with the tendering, there is an additional six million just for phase one of, of shortfall, which was to be split up among the committee members. And the, these bottom four items add up to approximately one point two million. Those, those members have indicated they don't want to participate and fund their share. So that one point two million also has to be split up either amongst the rest of the members or essentially the project does belong to the M D Tabor that there's a possibility the M D Tabor would have to fund that if the other members don't want to contribute up to the, the, that additional amount. So I guess to to sort of bring it together is, if, if we are going to advocate for additional funding, we could possibly look at this shortfall for phase one as well to try and seek some additional funding for all the committee members while we're, we're looking for funding for the shortfall in the, with the inflationary costs as well.
I think we'd be remiss not to when we have really flogged this to the ministers and the ministers seem to understand and are well aware. They appreciate the work that's been done by the committee and the technical team. So we shouldn't let up. We probably, I think, have at least five ministers and now to hear that the premier are aware there's a shortfall. So we need to construct something that gives them evidence and they were asking for that when we were at R M A. So we, let's not let up on that. Jack, go ahead and then we'll go to councillor Tercado.
Sure, I, I think another thing that probably should be noted, and Merrill, you can help me with this one probably, is I believe the town of Bo Island and the village of Barnwell have also committed to donate a little bit toward the project.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah. The village of Barnwell committed seventy-five hundred dollars and Bo Island, I think, is around seventeen or is it thirty, somewhere? I could dig for it, but yeah, both of them have committed to portion of phase one. So I, the, the drive is to try and get the city of Lethbridge and the city of Medicine Hat on side. We've had preliminary meeting with the city of Lethbridge and we've asked for a meeting with both mayors, Mayor Clark and Mayor Higgin, and we're still in the process of trying to get those meetings set up to go back to the city of Lethbridge at this time with asking for a financial contribution as well as same thing for the city of Medicine Hat. But we haven't been successful yet in getting a second meeting with Lethbridge or an initial meeting with Medicine Hat, but we are working on it. And that way, we felt like if we could get everybody, all the communities between Lethbridge and Medicine Hat involved, it's easier to go back on a regional basis and say, everybody's on side with this project and I think it goes along, we'll go a long ways in getting some more government funding when it's truly a regional, regional project. Would it be a good idea to bring this? Bring this ask forward to the committee, whatever committee meeting here on for the, I guess, the sod turning ceremony that will happen sometime at a later date on the phase one. Would it be possible to bring forward some type of ask of our partners, our financial contributing partners, to sign on to a letter that we might draft? Of all the ministers and M L As that we've spoken to? Try and ask for this money? Would that be a, I guess, a good idea?
I would say from my point of view, John, that'd be a great idea. The more strength in numbers, for sure. And get, get their support would be like I would even go as far as the ones that not committed to funding, they're still partners in it. And you get right, I'm just a firm believer, the more people you get on side, the bigger the population on side, the more strength you have.
And I, and that's why I think even whether we get a financial commitment from the two big cities on either end of this, if we can get their support for the project. When we go to back to the government, it'll go a long ways to show that the importance of the project when you've got all, everybody signing on to it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Go ahead.
Would it be helpful, I guess, to get local M L As of the two large cities to be able to help with getting meetings with the mayors?
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt. I know the councillor from Medicine Hat, Alison Van Dyke, is working with her mayor to try and find a time when we can come make a presentation. And Mayor Higgin acknowledges my emails, but he just has been busy. And like I said, having the M L As might not hurt because gets them up to date as to what's happening also. So yeah, we could try that route.
Okay, administration has prepared a, a motion. Now we want to make sure that encompasses the desire of council to ensure we're covering all the items that we've talked about. So if, is someone prepared to?
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to council, direct administration to lobby the appropriate government ministries for additional funding with regard to phases one, two, and three of Horsefly Lakes Emergency Spillway Project, but also I guess, seek the signing on of this, these requests with our partners in the Horsefly Lake Spillway. That makes sense.
We'll just give Lace a moment to work her magic and then we'll put it up on the screen. So you have the basic gist of the motion from. So you have the basic gist of the motion from Councilor Chikado. Uh, does everyone feel that's robust enough? Based on our discussions? Seen some head nods, so we'll just wait for the motion to appear. Thank you. So the motion reads that council direct administration should lobby the appropriate government ministries. For additional funding with regards to phase one, two, and three of the Horsefly Regional Emergency Spillway Project. And also include the M D of Tabor and the South Regional Stormwater Drainage Committee's affiliated partners in those advocacy efforts. Go ahead, Jack.
Are we advocating for funding for all three phases or right at this point only phase one?
So the, the motion that was in front of us and the um. Supplemental information did reference um, phase two and three. But uh, I'll turn to administration for your thoughts.
The, uh. Uh, the, I think the, the main part of advocacy would, should be directed at uh, um, phase one. With regards to the, the shortfall on the tendering as well as the, uh, the additional approximately six million member shortfall. And, and I'd have to ask Jack to remind me what the shortfall is on phase two and, and phase three. Uh, without, without factoring any possible inflation as well.
Could the um, the premise of the motion, I think, is right, but they don't have to be the same letter. I think they could be separated out. I think when I read the rationale. It was to ensure that we are also trying to secure that two and three. Funding, so you know, maybe this initial letter is on, on phase one.
And maybe I would, uh. Maybe it would, would stick with the phase one shortfall because we know what that is. Um, trying to project what two and three might be, might be uh, a little too much, but also highlighting what uh. What Brian, uh, Padura has said about the uh, shortfall from the unfun- funded portion that the partners will be. Putting forward, at least for certain, the uh. The portion that's unfunded only because we have some partners that have chosen not. To become uh, a financial contributors. But I don't know how, how do we put that in a motion, I guess, or is it just, is it just showing the information? All of the information that we have for the shortfall, the current information we have for the short, shortfall of the phase one. And maybe that would be clearer and easier to uh. To show, because those are real numbers. So maybe it should just only be phase one, the shortfall of phase one.
Reeves Harris.
Well, I'm just, uh, yeah, probably, we know what the shortfall in phase one is. The way we were able to move this project forward is we've ta- taken money that was kind of set aside for phase two and moved it into phase one. So that we could move forward. Uh, otherwise, we'd be stuck and not, not moving forward. So. Phase one technically is funded. In a way. Uh, uh, as long as our municipal partners contribute what they've said they're going to contribute. But uh, the advocacy is, I guess. Phase one, we know we're, we're five million short, so we need at least that much. To me, I just, I hate to keep going back, and that's why I would like to have some real solid, we're going to be. Five plus, another five short, you know, rather than go on looking for five million now and. In a year from now, going looking for five more, but phase one, we know what we're five million short, so I think that should be the focus for now is. Is making up the shortfall because maybe phase two, we're going to be lucky and it's going to come in on what, what, what they think it's been. The tender, the original estimates are, but like I said, we do know what phase one shortfall is, so I guess we should concentrate on that now.
Okay, Councilor Chikado, are you prepared to, are you um, prepared to amend your motion?
I'm, I'm prepared to, I guess, amend it to one, uh, to what's on the screen, yes.
Okay, so just so those who are watching, uh, are. It, we removed phase two and three from the motion. Rather than go through the whole amendment process, that's all we've done. So I'll read the motion that council direct administration to lobby the appropriate government ministries for additional funding with regards to phase one of the Horsefly Regional. Emergency spillway project and also include the M D of Tabor and South Regional Stormwater Drainage Committee's affiliated partners in those advocacy efforts. People are nodding, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I, those in favor. That is carried. Thank you for that ongoing work to the committee and the technical people. We appreciate it. Certainly.
Uh, the question was asked about phases two and three, what the municipal contribution would be with between our partners and uh. Originally, when this all got started. The breakdown was for phases two and three, there would be a shortfall of just a little over two million for that portion of it for phases two and three. So, but that's on the original cost estimates, of course.
So as far as the, the, the advocacy, will we see this, I guess, once it, once administration has drafted this? Will this come through the committee? Will it come to council? Or will it come through the committee and then to council from the committee? Um, what will the process look like?
I, I can't speak for. Anybody hired in my pay grade, but I, I would think it would have to come back through you as elected officials, wouldn't it, Brian?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, we'd, uh, we, we'd likely draft up, uh, the um, um, the information and uh. Uh, circulate it, provide it through to the committee in order to gain that support, uh, the potential, uh. Um, signing on to, to the letter and then uh. Uh, at the same time, um, I, that, that is happening, bring it back to the M D of Tabor, or even prior to sending it out to the committee majors, bring it back to the M D council.
Right.
I guess one, one thing more administration would have to know is the amount, dollar amount you're looking at. Asking for, I think that's important.
Would that number probably come from the committee more so than uh, this council?
Yeah, I think that's fro- from the technical committee or for the, the committee. I said, we have to kind of wait until M P gives us their estimate of what it's, what, what two and three is going to be before we really know what kind of shortfall we're going to be there. As I said, it's. It's hard to keep asking, but um. I think once we've got those, those numbers, we'll have a better idea of what we really need to go after.
Uh, this motion though is on phase one. Um, so. Generally, when we meet counts, M D council makes a motion to draft a letter or to pursue. Then it gets drafted by administration and the Reeve reviews it and sends it out. We often don't get it back here. So might be a good practice just to see it, but I don't think it has to come back here for approval. That will be a waste of. Of resources and time, but whatever the proper channel is with the technical committee. Is, is nice, it, it should be done, and I think it's always nice for council to be aware of what letters are being sent. Um, even though the Reeve signs them, it, our, our backing is behind it, so it's always good to see. Okay, anything else on the Horsefly spillway? I realize it is a major part of our municipality and the impacts. So I don't want to rush people. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to number nine. Uh, request for decision non bylaw highway twenty five advocacy, and I'll turn that to Brian.
Uh, wha- what we received is a, a little of in- information with regards to highway twenty five, uh, um. The information was, uh, Alberta Transportation was looking at putting highway twenty five back to a gravel, um, road. And uh, Lethbridge County had forwarded a letter that, uh, they, um. Uh, I guess we're supporting that, uh, um. Initiative from Alberta Transportation, and uh, when we look through our records, the, the. The latest thing we've, we were able to find is, is an email back from two thousand eighteen indicating, uh. A request for some feedback on, on, um, the potential of uh, converting highway twenty five, uh, um, back to gravel. So. If, if, uh. If, um. Corey Green, um, is sort of a resource if, if he wants to s- answer any questions to council. The majority of that road, I believe, is in Lethbridge County as well. And uh, some, and a, and a portion is in the M D of Tabor and.
Thanks, Corey. We'll take any uh, input you have for us on this.
Um, like Brian had said, um. The county of Lethbridge is in support of this decision, and they're just asking that. We support them and draft our own letter of support.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
What are your thoughts on turning it back to gravel? I know it's a bit of a. Frankenroad right now, you have to dodge the holes in it, and some places you can't dodge them.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I. I believe it's a, a good decision, so.
When they revert it back to gravel, does it become a non-banned status then? Like right now, I think it's seventy five year round, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
And if, if they revert it back to gravel, they get it to a non-banned status?
Um, that would be part of our support letter.
Cause it's uh, like, uh, council for Kedvitz, it's a Frankenroad.
Yeah.
You, you don't drive it in a, in a car unless you want to lose your car.
Yes, that's correct. I don't drive that road anymore.
Okay, is anyone prepared to make a motion? And the motion that's presented by um, administration for our consideration. Doesn't include that non-band, um. Status language, so I think it would be pertinent for whomever, if they're willing to include that.
Any comments on the road? You don't use it because you don't dare to.
I know there is a. Time to time, I see there is quite a few liners use that road and superbies, but. They must need to shake their mud off or something, because it's uh. Probably smoother driving in the ditch, but yeah, it's pretty rough shape. I think that road was built back. Years ago when the biggest truck was probably a three ten and over and superbies and Cataliners on it, so. No road is going to hold up with the, that kind of traffic.
I, I can give you the motion that. Council direct administration to draft a letter of support to the Ministry of Transportation with the grade reverting highway twenty five back. Highway twenty five back to a gravel surface and get it to a. Uh, sta- status that it won't be banned or a non, non-banned status is what I would like to see with the road.
Go ahead, Jack.
I think, uh, and Corey, you might be able to help me with this, but I think from the canal. Bridge by Richard Sanders to highway, what, five twenty? Five twenty six, I believe, is paved. I think you want to check that piece. I think that might be asphalt. So if it's asphalt, I wouldn't rip that, but you might want to check that, Corey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that.
It's virtually what, six miles in the M D? Six or eight?
I think it might be less.
What is the, uh, what is the road that trucks are taking now instead of that? Is it the eight forty five? Or is it some of the M D grid roads?
I believe the majority of the traffic's taking eight forty five.
Which is a slightly longer route. Um, depending on where they're coming from, the coming from the last bridge would be slightly ro- longer route, I guess. It's really nice to have an alternate route for the heavy traffic, though.
Uh, does the information from Jack? Change our motion, or are we okay to proceed with the motion as presented?
I guess if, um, is that stretch of. The road that's paved, is it good enough condition not to have to be reverted back or? I, I don't, I know that I've driven the road, but it's been a few years, but it's a nasty. There's some nasty stretches in there, that's for sure, and if, if the county would like to see it removed or move back to a gravel and that suits them. I'm okay, but if, if there's a stretch that's in good enough shape that they don't have to rip it, I would leave it, but uh. Except I, it's been a while since I've driven the road, other than I, I have driven it when it's been in pretty rough shape.
Yeah, and I can, I can run up there and take a look at that section.
What, would that section, uh, be non-banned status that? Or would it, would it have the same, I guess, bound status as travel? Or would it not support that? Because that would be the, the question I would have. If we don't accomplish anything about having availability of the road for heavy traffic. Then we, we might want to double, you know, have a second thought about retaining it. Uh, but if it can support, uh, the way just as a gravel road would, then I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, I believe that person's only like a half a mile, I believe, eh? From the five twenty six to the bridge over the main canal.
So we do have a motion in front of us. Um, I will read that out. That council direct administration should draft a letter of support to the Minister of Transportation with regard to reverting highway. Twenty five back to gravel surface. And. Or, or even the, we can use Lethbridge, the gravel road surface could then become a non-banned roadway. That would allow all forms of commercial and agriculture traffic. We can steal that line right from the third paragraph of. County of Lethbridge letter. It's, it's basically the same thing, it's just a little more words. It, it doesn't change the intent of, of the motion, it still stands, so. Uh, if council is comfortable, uh, any comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor. That motion passes. Uh, we'll leave it up to you, Corey, if there is anything that if council needs to do something different, if you review that. Stretch and it doesn't work out, but it would be odd to have a half a mile stretch in the middle of, uh, non-band to a band.
Yes, I agree.
It's at the end, okay?
Just, just over.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to nine point two, the Seawat A C P grant request. So we did see some of these at our last council meeting. Uh, people are making an application for the. A C P I C fund intake, so I'll just let administration speak to the nature of this request.
What we got on the agenda is a letter we received from, uh, Seawat in order to support a, a grant application, uh. That they're submitting to the Alberta Community Partnership. And they also provided a, a sample. And they also provided a a sample letter of support that we've included as well.
So as, oh, Counselor DeGroot, would you like to speak to this, please?
Yeah, sure. I I just get for some information, yeah, that they're. They're right at the last negotiating stage with the three companies. So they're looking for the two hundred thousand for the. Engineering representation. And the legal overview, because at this stage you you don't want to make the slightest errors because that could cause. A lot of grief time-wise and and you want to have the the document. Prepared. In such a manner that it's beneficial to all the municipalities who have signed on financially and with support.
Okay. With that, are you prepared to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that the M D of Tabor supports the Southern Alberta Energy from Waste Associations submission. Of a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Alberta Communities Partnership Grant Application. In support of developing an energy from waste facility.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Counselor Chikado?
And this, this would in no way. Lead to any financial contribution by the M D of Tabor or any assurance that we will be sending our waste that way, would it?
It it's not set in stone that you have to set, send your waste there. And your only contribution now is your per capita. Allowance that we we send in on a yearly basis. But I I think at that point at time. Once it's into production, I think it's something that. I think it will be pretty advantageous for the M D to. Sign on to instead of digging pits and and burying it or transferring it to other landfills by Lethbridge or wherever.
Without seeing a tipping fee charge. Um, I'd have a challenge to commit to that.
Exactly. And I think it was in that. Depending if there's any government funding, it could be anywhere from the thirty to ninety. Dollar range, if I remember right. I don't have any of the information in front of me, but.
So I I'm going to go to.
But this, this motion here, though, it. Sorry, sorry to interrupt here, but this motion does not commit. The M D, I think that's kind of where. It's for the letter of support. This is just for a letter of support. It's not committing, sending waste or any financial contribution at this point, right?
Exactly. Not anything beyond what we're our per capita. Is doing now.
Well, we're, it's no more than what we're doing presently. This is not a. A greater contribution or a greater commitment from the M D either financially or as far as what we're sending.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a motion in front of us. That the M D of Tabor supports the Southern Alberta Energy from Waste Association submission of a twenty-two, twenty-three Alberta Community Partnership Grant. Application in support of developing an energy from waste facility. So this motion is strictly showing our support for their application. So any further questions? Seeing none, those in favor?
In favor.
Is carried. Thank you. Okay, we're going to nine point three, the twenty twenty-three interim operating and capital budget. Um, before we get into this, do you guys want to take a natural break? This will take some time. Okay, I'm seeing nods, so we're just going to take a five-minute recess before we start into the operating capital budget. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. We're going to return to our meeting. And we are moving on to the interim operating and capital budget. Just so that those who are observing are aware. A great deal of time was spent in committee of the whole reviewing each aspect. Um, before we go any further, we'll turn it over to administration to speak to the. What this budget looks like, and then we'll open up to council for any discussion and questions.
Uh, thank you. So next on the agenda, what we've have in front of council is the twenty twenty-three interim operating capital budget. As well as the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty-six three-year operating plan in the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty. Eight, uh, five-year capital plan. And. Uh, just for for preliminary. To go through the the consultations with municipal staff and council. On September twenty-seventh, Committee of the Whole reviewed the twenty twenty-three proposed interim operating budget in twenty twenty-three capital budget along with a three-year. Three-year financial operating plan and five-year capital plan. And then again, on November seventh and November twenty-ninth, the Committee of the Whole again reviewed the proposed interim operating budget and. Twenty twenty-three operating budget and twenty-three capital budget. Um, along with the the financial plans. Department Directors have provided the information, including the details presented in the twenty twenty-three operating budget and. A plan and Department Director has also provided rationales presented in the twenty twenty-three capital budget and five-year capital plan. Proposed in the twenty twenty-three interim operating budget, it projects a four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred dollar operating budget deficit. Uh, the twenty twenty-two, uh, in comparison, uh, included a six hundred and three thousand and thirty-dollar deficit. Um, which includes and the the operating budget deficit of four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred includes non-cash expenses. A four million, three hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for amortization. Uh, the M D of Tabor continues to be exposed to potential changes in linear oil and gas property assessment values. And or additional uncollectible oil and gas property taxes. The twenty twenty-three proposed interim operating budget includes a projected net increase. Of one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three, five hundred and ninety-three dollars in municipal property tax revenues, including projected. Uncollectible property taxes of five hundred thousand. This is reduced from a million dollars in the twenty twenty-two budget. The M T M D Tabor to reserve seven hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven is uncollectible property taxes attributable oil and gas properties in twenty twenty-one. The amount of uncollectible property taxes attributable oil and gas pro, oil and gas properties is projected to be approximately three hundred thousand dollars in in twenty twenty-two. So significantly less than we've seen in previous years. We'd had a much success in. Property tax collections from oil and gas companies. And the three hundred thousand dollars that we're projecting in uncollectible amount taxes in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two is. Uh, primarily the uh, the amounts for designated industrial properties of. Companies in receivership, and they have to continue to generate assessments, even though. Typically, the the receivers do not pay the property taxes. For for the companies that are that are involved in receivership, so. The amount being reserved this year is primarily that amount for assessments that. There, we we didn't expect to collect.
Uh, Brian, on that one, wasn't there a change in legislation through the province to be able to be first? To be. Um, assured creditors. Um, so why why are the receivers, I guess, not paying the property taxes? Because I thought that was the change. The Alberta government had. Moved forward with, I can't remember the name of the bill was or whether it was administratively or how they did that. So what, why are these receivers not, I guess? If there's any money left, uh, paying the taxes.
Uh, thank you. Yes, you are correct. There was a change in legislation that placed. Municipal taxes ahead of other creditors. However, that priority is still behind. Uh, reclamation costs. And there is a, there is a case in front of a of a judge right now with regards to. Uh, the priority of of paying these property taxes while they're in receivership. Uh, I'm not sure when that decision's going to come out. However, if there still is not enough money to pay the reclamation costs. That would still mean there's there's wouldn't be, regardless of the decision, there wouldn't be money to pay the property taxes.
Thank you.
The proposed interim budget includes the following increases to to the property tax mill rates in twenty twenty-three. An increase of three percent in residential property tax mill rates. Three percent in non-residential property tax mill rates and an increase of nine percent in farmland property mill rates. Uh, this increase, this will increase the property taxes on an average home assessed at three hundred thousand dollars. From two thousand and twenty-six dollars in twenty twenty-two by thirty-six dollars to property taxes of two thousand and sixty-two dollars in twenty twenty-three. Um, and just as of note, the interim budget, the interim budget mill rates. Changes are based on projected assessments. Final budget mill rates are are calculated based on the municipality's actual assessment, which will not be known until. Approximately March of twenty twenty-three. In previous years, a final budget mill rate adjustments have been consistently lesser than projected in the interim budget. The M D of Tabor has maintained operating expenditures across organization to accommodate little expected growth in the assessment base. The actual value of any assessment change will not be known until the final assessments are made by Alberta Minister of Affairs in March twenty twenty-three. And what we've been seeing in the past is we continue to. See decreased assessments from oil and gas properties as more reclamation takes takes place. Uh, as some of the the properties fall into orphan well fund as well, but. As as those assessments drops, we're seeing lower, I guess, uncollectible taxes. And we are seeing some increases from solar projects to offset some of that loss in assessment. The twenty twenty-three interim budget, interim operating budget proposes. To increase water and sewer utility fees by approximately five percent in order to reach near full cost recovery for water costs. Excluding amortization by the year twenty twenty-five. And we put this plan into place to reduce the reliance on property tax dollars to fund water and sewer operating costs. Uh, once full cost recover, once full cost recovery for water costs is achieved, water and sewer utility fees will only increase by inflationary amounts in future years. Uh, our plan to to increase by five percent each year again, to get us to full cost recovery excluding amortization. It it gets close every year, however, recent inflationary amounts has sort of kept us at a standstill from from reaching that amount, I believe. The five percent increase isn't quite. Up to the amount of what we're seeing in current inflationary costs, but. Uh, to stay with the plan, we're proposing to only increase by by five percent for those fees. The twenty twenty-three interim operating budget proposes a seven percent cost living adjustment to salaries and wages. As well as staffing allocation changes included, including the addition of two full-time equivalent employees. Uh, and expand on that, we're including three full-time equivalent new positions and a reduction of one full-time equivalent. Uh, for contracted service for for bylaw enforcement services. That increases overall salaries and wages cost to eight million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand and fifty-five dollars. An increase of seven hundred and twelve, seven hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars from the previous year. Canada's annual inflation rate has reached a, had reached a high of eight point one percent in June of twenty twenty-two and. Uh, in October was six point, October twenty twenty-two, was it six point nine percent? Um, remaining unchanged from the previous month. Current projections expect inflation will remain. Current projections expect inflation will remain close to 6.8% at the end of year 2022.
I'm going to pause you just for a second there. So just so that everyone is aware, council through administration took a deep dive into our wages as well as surrounding wages, reviewed what would ensure that our staff is paid fairly and adequately and ensure that we were able to retain staff. And this is the number that we felt based on inflation was best serving to the MD of Tabor. Any other counselors want to make commentary on that, but we, it was an extensive look at the best practice for our municipality and ensuring our staff are recognized, but also retained. And so that's how we arrived at 7%.
In summary, the 2023 proposed interim operating budget projects to provide 4,312,344 dollars in cash from operations. This is an increase of 340,263 from 2022. This is important as cash from operations or funds that can be used for capital budget requirements or can be transferred to reserves for use in for use in future years. So what we have as attachments to to the budget or to this request for council decision would be the 2023 draft copy of the interim operating capital budget. That appears similar to the municipal financial statements. This would be the public document for the interim 2023 operating and capital budget. Showing total revenues as well as total expenditures for the year and surplus. There's some schedules included to show some breakdown of those revenues as well as expenditures. Based on function. As well as by object. And then a summary of the or the capital budget, which indicates the capital purchases as well as where the funding for those purchases is coming from in 2023. And in complying with the Municipal Government Act, which requires a a plan, a three year operating plan. And as well as a five year capital plan be prepared, we've also got a draft copy of the proposed three year operating plan and five year capital plan.
So these are extensive documents. I encourage council has been through them in a variety of ways. I just pulled up the November 29th Committee of the Whole agenda so that you could see one of the it's probably the second iteration that we had in committee of the whole of the 2023 proposed interim operating and capital budget. And then also the proposed capital budget and 10 year plan, which was the business cases for each item that we are purchasing as well as projects. All of those items that were in those lists were not accepted for a variety of reasons. And even as we go along, those could evolve. But so that if you would like to have a detailed look, I encourage you to go to November 29th Committee of the Whole. So you can see the business cases that were developed so council had the ability to make that decision. So I would turn it over to any of councils who would like to speak to this interim operating and capital budget. Questions that they may have for administration or comments on the process that we undertook to arrive at these numbers and the proposed increases to the mill rates. Go ahead, John.
So I guess my question is, once this is passed, does that mean that we can't revisit some of the machinery and equipment and transportation infrastructure? Projects that were approved in in January? Is there a possibility to go back and look at that again, or or once this is passed, it's it's done with and can't be revisited?
I I believe the the resolutions that came out of committee of the the whole to council was to in to include the the in the in the capital budget, the project for oil road rehabilitation. However, within there, there was a a direction to bring back to council the details with regards to exactly which roads were going to be included with rehabilitation. So what we've included in the capital budget is a project for oil road rehabilitations. However, final approval or final acceptance of of those amounts would be brought back to council for which road, which roads would get treatment and what kind of treatment? And and in regards with final, final acceptance of the project, according to the purchasing policy. Any purchase over $200,000 comes back to council in that regard for I guess, approval in accordance with the purchasing policy. So whether it's a a vehicle or a greater or an infrastructure project. Anything under, anything over $200,000. I I guess I'll put it, anything up to $200,000 can be approved by the CEO. Anything over $200,000 comes back to council for approval.
I guess the follow up to that would be, I guess, my concern here is that we went through the the equipment machinery and equipment budget with hardly any, any change to it. And yet, when we got to the project budget, we saw that we couldn't afford everything there. So I'm just wondering if there's any way of adjusting one to help the other in the new year. If we adjust some of the equipment to be able to help with some of the transportation infrastructure projects.
In in the past, after the interim budget's been approved, directors typically prepare their request for quotes to go out to the suppliers for purchase of a capital equipment. So some of those purchases may be initiated prior to the committee, the whole meeting again to discuss changes to the equipment vehicle budgets and in order to fund or or enhance funding to engineered structures. And in keeping with past budgeting practices. The engineer structure funding for those projects has been typically utilizing grant, various grant streams like the MSI grant, the federal gas tax, which is now the Canada Community Building Fund. And using those grants to fund infrastructure projects, but as 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 far as the equipment building purchases, we we've been utilizing the the positive cash flow or the cash from operations to go into reserves and then take out from those reserves to to purchase equipment vehicles and any capital building upgrades and such. So I'm not sure if I answer your question accurately, but once the interim budget is approved, like I say, typically activities begin to begin sending out requests for proposals for those equipment purchases.
Counselor Hildebrandt?
Yeah, I I have a similar concern to Counselor Tricato there and the I had a bit of a different tone on the November 29th meeting as compared to the November 7th meeting. We had more information as far as financial consequences of decisions on the November 29th meeting than we did on the November 7th meeting. So what the items that we had gone through on November 7th may have received a lot more scrutiny if we would have the same information at that meeting as we did at the November 29th meeting. It's difficult to make the decision when you just go through everything once and you don't revisit a second time. And so I, I I know we are where we are at right now. But doing that in two days and then not going through everything again with a re- without revisiting it. Kind of is difficult. When you make a decision, you kind of want to look at the unintended consequences or the the secondary consequences. And so we went through once, but we didn't go through a second time and 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 see that again. So I I do have some concerns on some of the indications that were given at the November 7th meeting with the last information than what we had at the November 29th meeting.
So I I'll comment not from the Chair of the REE, but as counselor. So we did go through those itemized purchases. So in some councils, they get a capital purchase dollar amount, not individual. And then their directors deal with it. You know, we're quite unique. There is some municipalities who do it, but you know, we we look at literally if we're buying a new skid steer and trading one in. And maybe that gets us in a place that we put our farm and business hats on. So maybe it's a bit more challenging for us. And we could see that maybe we might not have quite done that independently. But when we looked at as a collective operating our fleets and things, we have a different lens through the municipality. We have had time to review this. I, if someone has specific changes that they would like to make on whether they're not happy with those capital items that are on the list. This is the time to do it. We're prepared to to relook at it, even though everything's been put together. We're not, our mill rate increases are not out of line. We're not doing anything drastic. We're trying to be as responsible based on inflation as as we can. But if if counselors have specific things they'd like to address, this is definitely the time in the interim budget discussions. Counselor DeGroot?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm I'm a little concerned about that, but not so not as, not as much though, but my one, I got to go back a little bit to our mill rate. And and we had a good comparison on the percent increase compared to the dwellings in within the MD that it would cost an extra $36 for a $300,000 home. I would like to see that in the future on on the land rate because some of my neighbors I'm talking to their if their houses are worth a bit more, their concerns are that they're getting taxed quite heavily on their yard quarters and not so much on their land quarters. My concern is that where can we get into a good discussion about about increasing the mill rate for farmland as compared to the residential properties?
So in the Committee of the Whole agenda, we did have a comparison of a variety of parcels that include some with houses, some are just grassland, some are factories that did show what the increase would look like. Would you like to have that brought forward today to?
No, that that was just a, just something leaning towards in the future. Let's say for next year's conversation to that, that we look at a little bit more closely, the value of of land versus our houses. That the concerns I'm getting is is the ownership of land within the MD of Tabor to the tax rate, let's say of non residential ratepayers to the people who live and support our communities. It's just something that I I think we should be aware of in the years to come where we go with the middle rates.
And I mean, in the province of Alberta, they're doing an assessment re- review right now. So perhaps that will change.
Yes.
Well, but we have to operate our tax rate based on the current legislation that exists. Counselor Hildebrandt, I can't see if you have your hand up in the view I see, which you had.
Why? And we, the mill rate discussion, if my memory is correct, was in the September Committee of the Whole meeting. And we did discuss that, had quite a robust discussion about residential versus non residential mill rates at that point in time. And, you know, we have to balance and make sure that we have enough, the mill rate is high enough to support the services that that the residents need. But at the same time, we don't want to be a disincentive for investment in development within our, within our communities either.
Counselor Reynolds?
And this one, I'm wondering about the engineered structures this Range Road 173 soil cement widening. Is that a busy road or where? Was that the road that the shoulders were starting to break away on us?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the that's the one by Barnwell. It's the shoulders are all falling apart and it's become a safety issue.
Just before you continue, I'll go to Counselor Clausen.
Yeah, I just see two large farms down that road and heavy traffic. And I'm just wondering if soil cement is the best option or if we're going to be fixing again in five years? And if it's not a busy road, then I, it's a lot of money to spend on that.
Uh, yeah, so the the proposed remedial work for that road is not soil cement. It is currently a soil cement road. It would be a a basin paved, so gravel and asphalt widening with an asphalt overlay over top of the existing soil cement.
So that abandonable road then too? In the spring?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a real difficult one because we just spend money on it this this year. So it becomes a very challenging one to be spending money on it again.
You're talking about 95A?
Oh, so the first question is on 173. So we don't want to kind of mix it up. Okay. So let's just, we'll keep going on 173 and then we'll address 95A. Go ahead, if you have further.
I guess I'm just looking for reassurance that this is going to hold up and we're not going to be fixing it again in five years or.
Um, I I don't believe that we would be going back. I can hire some engineers and consultants to to tell us that.
Go ahead, Brian.
And and I just have one, one question with regards to Range 173 with I guess, a potato operation as well as a cattle feedlot operation and and again, a little further down at the end of the road. A fresh vegetable farm that also supplies a lot of fresh vegetables through the year and and has other activities. Is there a possibility that this road may apply for some STIP funding if an application might be put together? I don't know if the traffic counts would be high enough, but with the three industries on there, there's a possibility of 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 STIP funding board.
Yeah, we could do the traffic count and and look into that option. That would push it to to next year's project then.
So if we're looking at moving projects around, are you looking counsel to find a replacement? So if we're looking at moving projects around, are you looking, um, counsel to find a replacement? Or move an item up that we held back?
I don't know, I was just asking questions and I couldn't remember the road, but now that. You say which road it was and the shoulders are breaking away, well, yeah, I. Understand what sort of it is now. Just I guess when we went through all this stuff, as you go through it and we haven't had to, I guess you observe it as you go through the meeting and. Trying to make your, make your decisions there, so.
I think if it's a safety concern, we need to deal with it. I was just wanting, um. Reassurance that this is the best option to go forward with.
Yeah, and I believe it's, it's the best option. We've done it on other roads in the M D and. It's a pretty standard practice, so.
Okay. You, if you need to come back to this, we certainly have time to do that. Uh, Counselor Hildebrand, do you want to speak to the, uh? Nine five A? Is that the road?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I was, when, uh. When we were talking about Barnwell, I guess there's two roads close to Barnwell and seventeen three and the nine five A. Uh, but yeah, that nine five A is really challenging. That's the one that we, we just did, uh. Uh, a soil cement type product on this year and, and then we're doing some remediation again. Uh, that's a, I find that a real challenging one to, to swallow, uh, to have to do that two years in a row.
Now, I think if I recall, we've asked for administration to follow up and with the, um. Owners of the product, the applicators and the engineers. So I think there's, um, additional discussion to come at future meetings on that. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, so I've reached out to the general contractor, um. He, of course, is just the general and he subs out all of his work. So he reached out to the contractor that applied the product. Um, I have an email from them stating that they. I've done it for years and their understanding of the product source meant is that it is a rough surface. Um, it is never intended to be a smooth surface. It is only intended to stabilize the base and have a surface treatment applied after. Um, I then asked them to reach out to this supplier of the product. And to this date, we haven't received any correspondence back from them.
Nine five A is not currently on this year's budget for any remediation to what's already there. Is that right?
It is part of the, the asphalt. Let me get the wording right. The oiled road rehabilitation, the one million dollar project there.
So I, I guess. Being unsmooth and undulating are two different things. Um, that road is, yeah, I understand a rough surface. A more soil cement is rough. But the insulation or the rolliness of the road and the unevenness of the surface is the bigger problem. Um, yeah, it's just very un, unsmooth. As far as the, the rolling, rolliness of it, not necessarily the road's surface, but the base.
Yes, and I, I agree and, uh. The contractor that applied the product, um, was taking direction from the. Product engineer. And, uh, what I've been told is that they were restricted in the length of sections of work that they could do. Which created a lot of stern stops. A lot of cold joints in other words, so. Created on uneven surface, but again, this is. One contractor to another and. This, this road was always. Slated to have a service treatment. Whether it was chip seal or asphalt, that was to be decided upon once the source man was done. This past year, we just didn't have the budget to do this asphalt. If, if we had the budget in that one million dollar line item from twenty twenty two, there would be asphalt on there already.
I suspect we'll still have some further conversations on this, whether we have to pursue other things. But, um, as far as the general oil road rehabilitation project, various roads. I, I would be reluctant to counsel to at this time be picking and choosing to change our budget. If, if we're going to be that drastic, I would say we almost have to pull up the agenda from committee of the whole. But, uh, it is up to council. And I think administration is hearing, we have some concerns with our capital purchases and our projects. So, you know, they'll be aware of that as they move forward. But, uh, if we're going to start going through line by line, which perhaps that may be for future budget discussions. That we don't want to just get a, a closed document, we won't, a summary document, we want to have that line by line. That's a different method of passing an interim budget. Any other comments or questions on the proposed interim twenty twenty three interim operating capital budget? Uh, I'm not trying to close the discussion. I just want to make sure we're moving forward. So hearing none, uh, we do have, this is an important document. That allows us to begin our operations in twenty twenty three. And you have the, the recommendations. Before you, and there are three attachments, uh, as well. So you can, if anyone has any questions or else I'll call for a motion at this time. And then we can have further discussions as, once the motion's on the floor.
I'll move the council adopts the municipal district of Tabor's twenty 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 three interim operating budget. In accordance with section two forty twos, number two, the municipal government act as presented in attachment A. And, and the council adopts the municipal district of Tabor twenty twenty three capital budget. In accordance with section two forty five of the municipal government act as presented in, in testament A. And the council approves the municipal government, or the municipality of Tabor twenty to. Twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six financial plan in accordance with the. Section two three point one of the municipal government act presented in attachment B. And that council approves M D of Tabor's twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight capital plan in accordance with section. Two eighty three point one of the municipal government act presented in attachment B.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds, uh, because we didn't spend a lot of time. You can see that the M G A dictates that we have future, um, planning documents. And that they have been reviewed and discussed and, um, are logical as we move forward. Now, because they are a plan, they can be changed. But that shows that our municipality isn't doing, um. Our financial planning and our capital planning has a vision and there is, um. Thought that goes into ensuring that we aren't just every year picking a new project just because. We have established whether we need replacement or repairs and it gives us a good guiding document. Okay, I'll, any further comments or questions? Reeve Harris?
No, no questions. I said, sorry, I missed the last forty minutes of what's been going on, so I, I don't know what I should say or I shouldn't say. But I, as. Councilman Ag is. Explained, uh, we do have a plan going into the future, uh, in the next three years on the. Operating side and I think a ten year plan roughly on the capital side. And, uh, it's been thoroughly discussed at committee of all. And, uh, go- gone over the projects that, uh, are going, proposed to be, be done next year. So I think, uh, I think for the general public, they just need to know that this isn't as. Councilman Ag has talked about, it's not a haphazard, uh, plan. It's been thought out and, um. The, the capital projects that are proposed, uh, in the, in this year and the coming years have, have been thought out and prioritized. And, um, and then discussed thoroughly at the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'll ask for those who are in favor.
In favor.
Okay. Those who are opposed. Okay, the interim operating budget for twenty twenty three is passed. Thank you to, um, all of our directors and our C E O for putting together all of that information. I think from the comments that you heard here today at council and those in the past at committee of the whole. Counsel may, um, need to spend some time, uh, ensuring that they're happy with the process. It, it's well deliberated, but when we have, uh, questions and concerns, perhaps we want to make a change and that's up to council. So I encourage you, uh, in the, in the very short future to bring that forward to council. On how we can better manage if you felt there was something flawed. It was extensively reviewed and I, I'm glad we're moving forward. Okay, we are. Number ten bylaws, fees and changes by law number nineteen ninety nine. Oh, I'm sorry, nine point four Christmas, uh, yep, that's because it's not black and white, it's in blue. Nine point four is Christmas operating hours at the M D of Tabor. I'll turn that over to Brian and Reeve Harris.
Hey, I'm not sure if, uh, uh, Reeve Harris wants to begin or if, uh.
I just, when I was in the office yesterday, I just asked Brian, uh, what the plan was, what, what, uh, by policy, et cetera, et cetera. Was going to happen for staff over Christmas holidays and, um, I'll let Brian explain what, uh. What days will be given off, uh, as per policy? And then if council wants to change anything and allow more time off, that would be the reason it's here for discussion today.
Thank you. Um, in accordance with our employee policy manual, uh, we recognize, um. Uh, when the statutory holiday falls on a weekend, uh, we recognize the, the following days, uh, the next week. So I believe, um, um, this year's, uh, um, dates, uh, Christmas Eve is, uh. A Saturday, so December twenty fourth is a Saturday and Christmas day falls on a Sunday and, uh, Boxing Day falls on a Monday. So we'll be closed on the Monday and Tuesday according to policy, uh, um, for those two stat holidays. And then, um, uh, I believe January first falls on a Sunday. Is that correct? And so, uh, then we closed on the, the Monday following, uh, New Year's. And, and I guess, uh, the only other, uh, days is, um, uh, in the, in the more recent past, uh. Christmas Eve, uh, hours, uh. Depending on, on, um, uh. The decision of council, uh, in the past, uh, operations, uh, uh. Throughout the municipality as, uh, short of water, um, treatment plants, they, they have to continue to do their test. We've, uh, we've either closed and given staff, um, a half day off or a full day off for Christmas Eve. This year, Christmas Eve is on a Saturday and, uh, um, the, the, the day before, the day before Christmas is, is a Friday, the twenty third. So, um, according to policy, uh, we're scheduled to be open on the twenty third, uh, all day.
Yeah, like you said in the past, we have adjusted when Christmas Eve has fallen on a, a weekday. So, uh, but if anyone has any comments or concerns, we know then at least they will have, uh, twenty six, twenty seventh off. And second and third with operations resuming December twenty eighth and December. Fourth. Now, are we close the third or just the second?
Uh, so we're just closed on Monday, January second.
The second, so we're opening the twenty seventh and the third. Is that right? So, yeah, opening the twenty eighth and the third, I wanted to just make sure we're clear.
Yeah, that's real, that's correct. So, um, we'll be closed on, uh, Monday and Tuesday, the December twenty sixth and twenty seventh.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll be open, uh, Wednesday, the twenty eighth, um, till Friday, uh, the thirtieth. Those three days, uh, regular operations will be happening. And then, uh, uh, after New Year's will be closed on Monday, January second.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I was just curious if anybody wanted to give them a half day off on the, the twenty third. Or just regular Chris hours on the twenty sixth, whatever. Everybody wants to do, I, I just, just throwing it out to council because I know some, some years been adjusted the, the, about a time off during the holidays for.
Uh, we have a policy in place, uh. If it's, uh, I think it's, it should be an adequate policy, we may as well just follow the policy. If it's a inadequate, then we should revisit the policy instead of just doing this ad hoc. Um, I think we had this coming for us last year as well and having this come repeatedly, uh. Makes you wonder about the policy. But we do have a policy and, and I think we should probably follow our policy, uh, instead of every year changing it as a one off.
Okay, like I said, that's good with me. I just wanted to make sure everybody was, was good with that as far as, uh, time off for staff.
Okay, so we'll just maybe make a note that we should review that policy. Uh, going forward. Okay, moving on to bylaws, season charges by one number nineteen ninety nine. So we have done two readings. I'll just get Brian to speak to that and we're looking at doing third reading today.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, we guess we have, uh, um, bylaw number nineteen ninety nine, the fees and charges by law. Um, in front of council for, uh, a third reading, the, um, first two readings were given at the. I'm sorry, thank you, uh, the November twenty ninth, uh, council meeting. I believe that the November twenty ninth council meeting, there was some, um, question, uh, put forward to administration. With regards to, um, uh, uh, whether or not the fees and charges included in schedule A were cost recovery. And, uh, um. What we've done is, um, I guess to, to, to answer that question, it's, it's not a, a yes or no answer. Um, some of the, some of the fees, uh, and charges over the years, uh, had been developed, uh. Um, maybe with not the full intention to recover costs, uh, so, um. Uh, for example, the utility fees, uh, um, I've got, uh, a little explanation on each, uh, in the, in the R F. Request for council decision and utility fees reviewed annually during the budget development process and presentation to council with a current plan in place. To reach full cost recovery, not including amortization. So, um, for example, that one is, is to attempt to reach, uh, full cost recovery excluding amortization. For example, that one is is to attempt to reach a full cost recovery excluding amortization. In the Public Works Department, materials and fees are reviewed annually to recover material costs. And the Public Works permit fees are comparable to other municipalities, but with regards to the material costs, for example, the dust suppression that. It it is a big prod, I guess, a big cost to. To 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 provide dust suppression and we we charge fees to recover the materials only. So without going through each of the descriptions there, some fees included in the in the fees and charges by law. Are full cost, full cost recovery. Other ones are partial recovery of, let's say, materials, but not the full cost.
And so you're aware we have put all the the fees. Into our and charges into a bylaw. So this and then we pass it each year. With that full complement of fees instead of just in different places and different policies. So it's all go ahead, Brian.
I was just nodding my head in agreement.
Okay, yeah, so there. So you have an understanding of why we'll see this every year. Okay, any further questions? If not, I would call for. A motion on the bylaw as presented.
And give you a motion that third and final re- reading be given to the fees and charges by law number nineteen ninety nine, effective January first, twenty twenty three.
Hey, any comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor.
Favor, in favor.
That's carried. Thank you. All right, moving on to the responsible dog ownership by law number one nine nine eight. We are also seeing this. For the third time, the third and final reading is before you. There were some changes made. I'll turn it back to administration. That we understand it was just to tighten up some of the wording and be in alignment with our new. Position with. The and our memorandum of understanding with loss positive. So if there's anything else, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, so. To to provide the information, there was just some slight wording changes of replacing. Some words in the in the bylaw. With words, it means essentially a similar thing as well as removing a section with regards to the surrender of of dogs. And. That section with regards to the municipality being responsible to accept surrender dogs was removed from the bylaw.
Okay, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion for third reading. Or council.
I'll move that third and final reading to be given to the responsible dog ownership by law, number nineteen ninety eight. Effective upon third reading of the bylaw.
Any comments or questions? Those in favor.
In favor.
That's carried. Thank you. Okay, we're moving now on to the council code of conduct by law number one nine nine six. It's okay, I have. This, we have had a committee who was struck of counselor held or counselor de Groot and counselor Clausen. Who've been reviewing this by law. We've also had legal support from Karen and partners and some administrative feedback. We came to this. Review also by way of some recommendations. From the Alberta Ombudsman. Those recommendations are included in the RFD. There is. However, many you can. Yeah, there. Those are listed in the RFT just a little bit lower so that you can see them on the screen for those who don't have it in front of them. And handed out was some of the observations from the from the changes the committee proposed by Karen and partners. They were just recommendations that the committee reviewed. We accepted some and didn't accept others, but we wanted to ensure council. Had a copy of those. So the bylaw body wasn't. Changed. It is the schedule. That is the procedure. I just want to make sure I have the right. Language. So we didn't do any changes and the bylaw aligns primarily with the well does align with the MGA. And then we have. The schedule A to Code of Conduct by law, which is the Code of Conduct Complaints Procedure. So it was initially drafted by Karen and Partners. The committee has reviewed it several times and you can see the. Changes, they're done by strikeout and by color, and then we've also included a clean copy of the bylaw. So. Before we go any further, I wondered if. Counselor Clausen or Counselor de Groot had any comments for council so on the process or if there was anything else that. I've missed. We we brought this back to committee of the whole as well, and we took your comments and went back and made additional revisions. The intent was we are guided by the MJ to have a code of conduct and our plan was to make sure that the. Complaints procedure was clear and reflective to ensure a fair process. Also from the workshop we received from the Alberta Ombudsman team to make sure we. We use the language that if there is a code of conduct complaint, the process and the outcome is dealt with in an administratively fair manner. So I'll turn it over to Counselor de Groot and Counselor Clausen.
The big, the big change for us was when we were going to investigate as a council and through advice from our. CEO, Arlis Croft, we. When we thought about that a little bit, that made absolute sense. And then the other changes, I'm quite happy with the way it reads and. I'd be willing to go forward with it as it is.
Okay, so you could see from the complaints procedure, there's quite a few changes. It definitely changed from the original proposal that was passed. The original first reading that was passed. So in order to. Ensure we handle this legislatively correct. It has been proposed and the committee agrees that we should. Accept the changes. To the attachment before we move forward with doing second reading. And so I would. Probably call for the changes to the attachment schedule as a line in touch. The, okay, yeah, just the attachment be the, sorry, I'm just reading what's in front of me to schedule A to the Code of Conduct by law, which is the procedure. And then if that is on the floor, we can have some discussions about the content of that. So do I have someone to move the changes?
I can move that by law number nineteen ninety six council code of conduct by law. Be amended to include all of the amendments as outlined in attachment B, as recommended by the Code of Conduct Review Committee.
Okay, so at this time we can answer any questions on the. Changes that were made or if there's any comments, the committee can answer or just. Okay, so seeing none, I I'm assuming that people are comfortable with the process. Just another note, there is an informal flow chart. And a formal flow chart that are the procedures that are attached. They will not make up part of the bylaw. Those are just visual compliments to the words. For the committee, it was felt that we could run Code of Conduct complaints through this to ensure that the wording matched. Our vision and council's vision, and we felt we were successful at that. But just so that you know, these will not make up part of the bylaw. They could just be a supplementary document that administration could provide if people want and. Personally, I felt they're quite valuable because the wording you can get quite mirrored in what the next step is. This just gives you a bit of a guideline, but the bylaw. The black and white words are the guiding document. This is just a supplemental. So we do have a motion on the. The floor. To accept the changes that count that is that by law number nine nine six. Council Code of Conduct by law be amended to include all the amendments as outlined in attachment B, as recommended by the Code of Conduct Review Committee. Hey, those in favor of these changes?
In favor.
Okay, those opposed. That is carried. So now we will go to the clean copy of the Code of Conduct by law number nineteen ninety six. I, we are at second reading.
I could give you that motion. That council gives second reading. As amended and as included in attachment A to by law nineteen ninety six Code of Conduct by law. Effective upon third reading of by law nineteen ninety six.
Thank you. So any comments or questions on the second reading of by law nineteen ninety six that is before you? Seeing none, I will call the question those in favor. That is carried. Thank you. We do have the option to give third and final reading to this by law. It's not required at this time, but this committee, it is available. The motion is in front of you if there is appetite of council to have third and final reading. I'll go ahead, Counselor Hildebrandt, then we'll go to Reeve Harris.
Um, I was just thinking here because we've made revisions to the bylaw in second reading. That it might be prudent just to let it sit and and revisit it again before we give third reading. Of particular, given that there have been revisions to the bylaw.
Okay. Reeve Harris.
I was just gonna conconcur there, just maybe everybody needs to have another look at it over the next little bit here. My last question, though, you have been in contact with Jennifer Sykes and she's. Recommending that these changes meet the requirements as well as what the Ombudsman said we needed to do.
Yes, the require. So we have had Jennifer Sykes, the the legal counsel from Karen and Partners. Review the document and she did make some recommendations. In the. In this twenty one point one comments that she made to us, she didn't. Find anything that was. Not compliant with the MGA. She did help us with some wording and some changes. Some of the things that she suggested. We maintained our intent and kept it in there, but anywhere where we might have missed a word or. Were redundant in some of our language, we had her go through that. So it couldn't hurt perhaps to have her read the. Second reading while it's clean and not having to have all the changes, but we did go through each one of her comments. On the Ombudsman recommendation, just one moment, I have the letter in front of us. We did, she referenced it and we had it as a supporting document. And we felt that the recommendations. Met the Ombudsman's expectation. With the exception that there is a means to appeal. There is no means to appeal a complaint decision as per the MGA. The committee at one time brought forward and said we would maybe bring it to council's attention. In the future to see if foothills little bow has an appetite to bring that information forward. To RMA. But we felt at the time we had enough to deal with to ensure our bylaw was accurate that that might be a post event because even though the. Ombudsman commented that there should be a mechanism for appeal. Currently, that does exist only at the Court of Queen's Bench. And those many Code of Conducts have gone before the Court of Queen's Bench and they have been overturned. But. We don't have a piece of legislation other than that which currently exists. John, did you want to add anything on that? Sorry, that was a lot of.
No, I think you covered it very well. Thank you.
So as as council mentioned, I think we should, it's there. We way missed the deadline that they gave us, and I know that Jennifer looked for an extension to what we had to do with the Ombudsman. But I think waiting one more council meeting for third reading where anybody can take a clean copy and have a. A thoughtful look at it. I think would be prudent at this point in time and we can deal with it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And you know, I think also we really pressured administration to. Get the clean copy out. So it'd be nice for them because I see there's just some spacing and alignment things that they probably would like to fix up that. It wasn't their fault. We were pushing hard to get this on the agenda. So I agree with that. So on that, we don't have to really do anything. We'll just look for it on an upcoming meeting. Just thank you to the committee for the work thus far and we'll be able to answer any further questions. At the next, at the third reading of the bylaw.
Can I make a comment here as well?
Certainly.
We've mentioned like in the last few minutes here, the Ombudsman's letter extensively. It probably would, I think, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to include that Ombudsman's Ombudsman's letter. With the third reading of the bylaw for information, just to provide some context because we've been referring to it repeatedly here during this debate.
All right, that did get discussed by the committee and we'll we'll just we'll take, I I suspect you'll need to make a motion, but just to be aware that. Some of the names may have to be redacted and that was the reason we went with just the recommendations in the RFD. But I hear what you're saying and but just know that the committee did take that under consideration. But I I think if you want to do that, it might be good by way of motion. So we ensure that administration knows what council wants.
Okay, then if you need that by motion, I'll move that the Ombudsman's letter. Be included. For information for third reading of the Code of Conduct by law. Redacted to be compliant with FOIP.
Okay, we have a motion on the table moved by Counselor Hildebrandt that the Ombudsman letter. I'm going to give you a date dated April fourth, twenty twenty two. Be included for information on the Code of Conduct by law number one nine nine six. For information. At third reading and it be redacted to be compliant with FOIP. at third reading and it be redacted to be compliant with FOI.
And I also request that this vote be recorded.
Okay, the vote has been requested to be recorded. I will wait till Lise has that in front of us just to ensure that my interpretation was accurate to Counselor Hildebrandt's. Okay, I'll read it one more time. That administration include the ombudsman letter dated April fourth twenty twenty two for information when being presented for third reading of the Code of Conduct by law number one nine nine six. And be redacted to be compliant with FOI. Hey, this is your, that your motion was put on the floor for council, Counselor Hildebrandt, is that in keeping with your intention? We changed a couple of words.
That is, that is completely within my intention. Thank you for the clarifications.
Thank you, and this vote will be recorded. So those in favor. Okay, those opposed? Hey, can you see?
Yeah, that I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. So that is carried. All right, so that finishes off bylaws. And now we are moving on to number eleven policies, the council remuneration policy, we have RFD in front of us. I will turn it over to administration to speak to this and then council, I would look for some discussion as well.
So what we've done is we brought back the council, it was a council per diem policy and we're recommending a change to call this policy the council remuneration policy and in the revisions, we've defined the per diem rate of pay for each meeting attended on behalf of the Minnesota Chamber as appointed by council. And as well, we've created a half day per diem based on fifty percent of the twenty twenty two per diem rate plus any cost of living adjustment provided to staff as well as the full, full day four to eight hours per diem, again, based on the twenty twenty two per diem rate plus any cost of living adjustment. And in addition to that, a a per diem rate for any meetings in a day over eight hours at a full day per diem plus a half day per diem based on the twenty twenty two per diem rate plus any cost of living amount provided to staff in twenty twenty three. We've added the expense reports to be submitted to the REVE by the first council meeting of the next month. And we've also, I guess, to explain the the reason to change it from being called a per diem policy to the remuneration, remuneration policy is to be more in include all remuneration of council, we've included the policy with regards to benefits in addition to per diems that are, in addition to per diems and expenses paid to council to include the life and disability insurance coverage that's purchased through RMA Insurance. The provision for health and dental, health, dental and vision benefits through Equitable Life as well as the retiring amount provided to council as part of their compensation.
I'll turn to council to make comments.
Yes, if I can, my first question, Brian. And it's just a matter of, I mean, we don't have many days where you're there for twelve hours, but we had numerous of us had it on. After the last council meeting, we went from council to committee to an evening event. What, what are you envisioning? How like for council's sake, how do we, how would you like us to fill out the per diem sheet? The monthly per diem sheet when you're when you're there for twelve hours or like, you know, when you're talking about having a full day per diem plus a half a day, do you want us to outline each of the events we're at claiming half a day or like, I I'm just going to use November the twenty ninth as an example. We were a council for a good portion of the day and then committed the whole for a portion of the day and then we attended an evening event that evening. Just so everybody's clear, can you tell us how you would best think, best like us to fill out that per diem? To, if if we're going to claim a day and a half, what's the proper way of filling out the per diem, just so everybody is, knows and understands how you would like it done? Or do we need to think about that a little bit more yet?
And and like, so, so to answer your question, I guess the intention of the of the policy is when you're filling out your expense sheets. Those are our public documents, we put them on our website for the public to to see. I guess, in order to show what information and meetings are being claimed for, I I would, I would suggest that if there is a a morning committee, the whole meeting that that is shown on on the, on the claim form, if a different, if a different meeting happens that same day, I guess, and I guess to show that information include what type of meeting it was. And again, then again, in the in the evening, if there's a third meeting or something. Those would all be meetings in a day that are zero to four hours and would be shown on on the on the counselor claim form. If if there happens to be a meeting that does go and and this, this could include conferences and and the one for your attending conference, a conference, and then you have an evening meeting that is meeting with a minister and the such, that would typically be maybe a four to eight hour full, full day per diem with another half day meeting in the evening or for preference, it could be just a a meeting in a, in a day that's more than eight hours.
Just, just wanted to make sure everybody understood exactly the way administration would like to see us fill those out.
Hey, does anyone else have any comments? You can see from the attached doc, go ahead, Counselor Hildebrandt.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say there's some counselors that that do have evening meetings on on Tuesdays, which are our normal council days. And this is just to be respectful for their time for those counselors that do have meetings on on those evenings where we already have a full day. You know, they're putting in time over and above and I just want them to be compensated fairly and be respected, we have allowed.
Thank you. The attached document as well reviewed some of our neighbors and MD councils that are similar, just as we did with our staff wages, we did the same thing with our counselor remuneration and we felt we were keeping, we're certainly not the highest, we're not the lowest and if you are to check the public facing documents of each counselor that submits and we encourage everyone to do so, you'll see that our counselors are very cognizant of taxpayer dollars and their duties and what they submit, so I give a lot of credit to the counselors for how they manage their remuneration. Is there any further comments or questions on the update to the policy? The the main fact, the main change is that if counselors so choose, they can acknowledge the extra hours that are above our eight hour workday and I suspect you'd submit it as a one point five or one point two five when you're filling out the per diem document. And we also recognized the benefits that we receive, they are included and so that that's listed there for everyone to see that's clear in the policy. We made a change on the expense date so that people have a timeline and then I'm kind of jumping around and then we went back to what was a previous practice where the REVE receives slightly more compensation than the counselors, recognizing that the REVE is called upon to attend the office regularly for a variety of responsibilities as well, public events that may not fit our normal per diem or remuneration policy. So it is acknowledged that demands on a REVE's time is much different and more extensive than a counselor's time, so it made that recommendation to administration when they were drafting this policy. So if there are no further questions about the remuneration policy or the changes, I would ask for a motion to be made.
I can move that council adopt the twenty twenty three council remuneration policy with amendments. That's presented.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing none, those in favor? That is passed. Thank you. Thank you to administration for flushing out all the questions we had about the remuneration policy. Okay, we've come to the end of the agenda. We had no consent agenda items. Does council have any requests for information and motion? I saw Brian wrote down that we wanted to perhaps review the holiday policies or date of closure, I don't know the exact name, but I suspect he's penciled that down so we can look at it in the future. Is there anything else that didn't come by a motion? Okay, seeing none, then we will, I would ask for a motion to move into closed session pursuant to section one ninety seven two of the MGA and section twenty four of Division two, Part one of FOI, advice from officials and personnel, but before I call for that agenda, just like to thank staff again for the work they've done in twenty twenty two. Thank you to our residents for the support you've shown us, the questions you've presented and challenged us with. We are, we'll continue to do our best as we move into twenty twenty three and Merry Christmas to you and your families. So now I will call for a motion on closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
So that comes from Murray twelve eleven twenty nine. Wait for her to give us that. Okay, so we are, I'd call for a motion to come out of closed session at eleven forty six. Hey, those in favor? That's carried. Yeah, from our discussion enclosed, we have one motion to come out. I'll look to whom is going to make that.
I can do it, but I'm not sure a hundred percent that I got all the different things that we needed to get in there, but I would like to give you the motion that administration bring forward back to to council of volunteer honorary and policy, the current benefits that are volunteers might be receiving. And this is where I'm, I think there was one more that I didn't get written down, so I would look to somebody else around the table for the other, the last part of that, if there was one other thing we were supposed to, going to ask for.
You bring municipalities comparison.
Yeah.
Right, okay, thank you. So that would be the motion that I present to you.
We'll just give Lacey a moment so we can have a look at it and make sure it's our needs. Harris, is that your intent?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? I've seen quite a few nods that council direct administration should bring for the volunteer honorary and policy and the current benefits that are provided to volunteer firefighters and include other municipal comparisons for council review. Okay, questions or comments? Those in favor? I think that is carried. We are at the end of our agenda. And who would like to give a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Reeve Harris. That includes the twenty twenty two council, unless of course we have a special meeting, but we'll hope not. So Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.